I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've been customary to announce that one of the commissioners' relatives passes away. Yeah, it kind of was mixed up in the paper, but my niece died. Her funeral was Saturday. Autumn Erickson. Her dad was Senator Jim Carignan. Don Erickson. My sister is Marilyn. So just wanted to tell you that because it got mixed up in the paper. It's in two different sections.
Are there some of these here?
It's up there in the change order.
Okay, everybody would shut their cell phones either off or vibrate for the meeting. I appreciate it. Welcome to the media and visitors that we have today. I'd also like to mention today in history, on the 6th, 1945, we dropped the first nuclear bomb on the ocean. So that's just a new history.
I got no doubt, excuse me, in 1782, the Purple Heart was also, so today, August 7th, is another state to remember. Thank you.
Sign up in the back of the room for discussion at the end of the meeting. We'll be picking up that sheet as we go into executive session day, so if you'd like to speak again at the meeting in the public comment period, please sign up on the sheet in the back of the room. So are there any financial conflicts of interest?
I don't know.
None? Okay. On the agenda, we're going to remove the item on the resolution. Oh, excuse me, non-financial interest. Do you have a reason for abstaining on non-financial?
I have none.
None of those problems. And on the additions and changes to the agenda, we're going to remove the resolution item of five on the legal tax. And we're going to add at the end of the meeting, just a building maintenance update. Are there any other additions or corrections to the minute? Let's read through the agenda. Now I entertain a motion?
Move to approve the change order in one second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close saying. Okay, I give the minutes. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes. And if so, are there any additions or corrections?
Yes, I know. Move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second, aye.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close saying aye. And it's passed. Next item on the agenda is the claims. If everyone had a chance to review the claims. Are there any questions on the claims? Any comments on the claims? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Move to approve claims. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close saying aye. Passes. Next item is the July payroll. Is there?
Move to approve the July payroll.
Thank you.
Second, aye.
Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close saying aye. Claims for the payroll passes. Next item is the transfer of ambulance cumulated dollars.
That's just budgeted, cumulated dollars over several years. We're keep obviously the ambulance issue and just just.
This is just cleaning up the books after that.
Well, he still has a balance in the account.
No, no, there's no, because he got a pickup too.
So, if the balance is zero. Do we need a motion on that? Yes. And the motion for the.
Is that the $125,000? Is that his?
It's $168,000.
And move to approve the ambulance transfers, $200,000 down the side.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close saying aye. Okay, next one we have is budget cash transfer to emergency management. That's also budgeted on the part now?
Correct. That's $125,000.
Need a motion to?
Move to approve the transfer.
Oh.
Cash transfer to emergency management, $125,000.
Second?
Second, aye.
Discussion?
Move that in the budget.
That's just a budgeted, when we do budget every year, it's in the budget because he doesn't generate enough cash.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The next one is the River Aspen East Road District. The election, it passed 11 to zero. So what we have here is?
I'm not sure I understand.
I don't think I do either.
You don't seem to be clicking.
As I was saying, this is an establishment of a new road district, the River Aspen Road, East Road, Road, East Road District. And they had a couple elections and come July 11th, then it's 11 to zero. Okay? So they are therefore certified as a road district. Yes?
I move to approve the River Aspen East Road District.
Second? Is there a second? Need a second?
I guess I'm a second.
Discussion? Any questions?
Nope.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Who's second?
All right, the next thing is the consent agenda. Did everyone have a chance to look at the consent agenda and is there anything that we need to pull out of the consent agenda to discuss? Included in that, we have a de-clined plaque, Dory plaque, Northport plaque, Dennis Brick plaque, Lock plaque, by the ways by DYLO. Is there anything that we need to pull out of there and discuss?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Nieces?
So she's in here.
We have some trouble.
Excuse me?
We're having trouble with the microphones. She's not being able to hear us. Anyway, we have a couple, we have a couple minutes before our next item. Can you motion in a second on your consent agenda? Let me check. Okay, so we have, Brian, you've got some information for us on the change order.
Yeah, we have a change order we're going to bring up before you as the board. And I'm going to have Kevin with Clark Engineering, Kevin Goff. And we also have Colin Kelly's on the inspection type of items and onsite. So all of us have Kevin take it over from here.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Goff. As Brian said, I'm here to talk to you about your, let's see, you guys are calling it the 2018 Yankton County Bridge Rehabilitation. This is those three Jim Bridges kind of northwest of here that have been under construction. You guys had a grant to do this project from the DOT. It was.
The BAGs. It was part of our.
Big Grant, exactly. Yeah, this is the one with the big grant signs out there. We signed a contract, or you guys executed a contract with the Journey Group. Sometimes people call them Sioux Falls Construction, but I guess on here, it's the Journey Group. And that work has been going on. They've worked on all of the bridges and proceeding. There was one element of the work that was a little difficult for us to predict the quantity that we would do. Those bridges had kind of a rubberized wearing surface put on them. One of the things we're doing is we're doing concrete repair on the deck. And the way we determine what areas need to be chipped out and repaired is to drag chains on them. And that rubberized coating made that real difficult. So it's part of the first process. It's part of trials and tribulations of rehabilitation. You never really know what you're going to get until you dig into it. They scraped that off and we've done some chaining is what we do, drag metal objects, use a little hammer to determine the areas that need to be repaired. And I guess the bad news is we have underestimated that quantity. So we have, we have started to, we know we're going to overrun those quantities, so we're bringing that information to you now and a change order. Again, this is a grant. It's 80/20. The changes that we're adding, this change order that I'll be asking you to approve here in a second is for an additional $32,000. There will be some additional amounts, maybe something in that same ballpark that we'll be back to with you later, once we get the rest of it done. But all of this amount is under the grant amount, so it's all still covered 80% state, 20% local. And as Brian explained to me, you guys have the 20% in your budget, so it doesn't, there's no budget request associated with this.
So is this $32,000 just the total?
This is the increase that we are asking for at this time. I think we will likely be back with an additional $32,000, plus or minus, whatever that turns out to be. We don't know what they're going to do until they start chipping at it and actually know what needs to be replaced.
This is on decking itself?
Yeah, it's on the surface of the deck.
When you say you drug the chain across, were you dragging it and breaking up the rubber coating?
The rubber coating was removed with a machine that ground it off. We ground it off, so we're down to the concrete surface. And then we can make those determinations about where the concrete needs to be replaced.
Is this more than one bridge?
It's three bridges.
But the change removal today is on all three of them or just on?
It's on all three. It's one contract for all three projects, all three bridges, one project.
Okay. Has there been anything else that you found that was surprising?
There is, there is one additional element that it's not, it doesn't have to be included in the project. It is the same type of work. And we're going to work with the contractors and bring a price back to talk with you about that. It's to do a little additional abutment repair on one of the substructure units. It'd be the same exact type of repair with concrete, chipping out some old concrete and replacing it with some new. We're going to get a price to do that and obviously we want to make sure it's within the funding, the grant funding and what you guys have budgeted for. And if we can do that, we'll probably try to leverage that just because you've got a grant, you can get 80% of it paid for now. If Brian has to come back and do that in a few years, that would be 100% out of his budget. So we're going to try to leverage that to the extent we can.
The repairs that you are making, or the rehabilitation, I guess you're calling this to these bridges. Do you have an estimate on how that's going to extend the life of these bridges?
Yeah, that's a good question. Brian had asked me to kind of address that. Really, the repairs we're doing are to extend the life of the bridge. So we're taking elements that are deteriorating like the deck. This doesn't. So we're extending the life and I guess we always say if we can't design, if we can't do an improvement that's going to make it last for 20 more years, then we shouldn't. So our life expectancy would be you won't have to do anything with this bridge for 20 years. These are 1957 era bridges. So they're getting up there in age. You're getting your money's worth out of them. This is a good time to be spending a little money and maybe buying another 20 years versus waiting 10 and having to replace it. But this does not affect the strength of the bridge. The girders, we're not doing anything. It has steel girders underneath the deck. We're just rehabilitating the girders and maybe a little bit of substructure in the concrete. So this won't, this won't necessarily increase the strength. I know there's been some concern about the posting on those bridges. We have never load rated those bridges before. We'll be load rating them before summer's over. The guys are, we're doing your bridge inspections this summer as well, so we'll take a hard look at that. I know Brian has stressed to us that those are important, important bridges. You don't have that many Jim River Bridges. So we're going to take a hard look at it as well.
Will you be removing concrete, cutting off metal, getting any new metal?
There is a little bit of rebar work that's being done. That's not part of this change order, but we're doing some joint replacement. There were some joints that were done in the 1957 that are, we wouldn't consider that to be a good design now. And it allowed water to get through, so there's some joints that we're rebuilding. In those areas, we're getting into the reinforcing steel and some of that's just we're chipping around it. They don't use big equipment. This is little five-pound jackhammers, little handheld jackhammers that they do. So it's kind of delicate work. But we are exposing some steel and removing some steel that was associated with the old joints and replacing those with something that's a little better serviceable. And if Brian needs to fix it, it's something he can fix readily.
And then when you weld, you're going to weld some plates in there or something, maybe?
I don't, I don't think there's a lot, there's no welding going on. Everything will be cast in place and encased in concrete or have some anchors that tie back into the concrete, so there won't be any. There might be some incidental welding, but it's not, there's no structural welding or anything like that going on.
Will that welding be x-rayed then?
No, the welding, what we're doing, if we were doing welding, it's very typical that you would. That's a good question. But where we would do that is if we were doing welding, if we were welding some flange plates on the, on the girders or something or a structural, a structural steel element, you would x-ray those welds for sure. But that's not the type of work we're doing here. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Do we need a motion on this? Any other questions by the commission?
Can we, do you mind if we talk a little bit about the sign project?
We can. Colin's actually working on that project too, under contract with the DOT. You want to take care of this matter first?
We need to take, we need to have a motion on this.
Second, aye.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, go ahead, Ray.
You're with the signs?
Yeah. Colin Kelly is, is an engineer with Clark Engineering who's been overseeing the signs. I don't think you actually did the sign inventories and the plans on this one, but he's done all that type of work before, so go ahead.
So I would, I'd like to just have a little conversation here because I've been getting some phone calls. Help me out here. This is federal.
Yes, sir.
This came out like five years ago. This whole project started in the surrounding counties around us, correct?
Yep.
The nuts and bolts of it, since this is federal, what you're doing has to be adhered to, correct?
Correct. Yep.
So what happens, what, explain the purpose of this, that it has to be adhered. Who's at, who's at fault if signs get trashed? How does this work?
So when we go through initially, we follow those federal regulations by the Federal Highway Administration. We follow the MUTCD standards, that Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. So we install the signs per that and we have an engineer, professional engineer stamp those plans. And all those signs will be put in, under our inspection, they'll be put in. And so we're responsible when we initially place the signs. Once all the signs are in and the project is over, whoever's in control of those roads, they're the ones who are responsible for the signs then.
Okay. So are these going to be monitored then?
They will be monitored by whoever's in charge of that road area. So if it's a township road, the township will monitor the signs to make sure they're in place. County roads, county will monitor the signs.
So what happens if they don't get replaced?
Well, the township say would be responsible for anything, if anything were to happen because a sign was missing and it wasn't up to the federal standards, then the township would be responsible.
Ray, are you talking about signs that didn't get installed in the first place?
No, we're talking about the new project going on here.
The new signs that could turn up missing?
So. I drove through Mission Hill and the signs are literally right on the edge of the road. We experienced about five months of winter. How is this going to work out for winter?
With plowing around them?
Yeah.
Well, this should be, the minimum a sign can be from the edge of the road is two feet. So you have a bit of play there to get the wing out two feet off the edge of the road. And a lot of those township ditches aren't deep anyways to wing it up further. So are you concerned with them being closer than two feet?
I know there's going to be a lot of signs out in the field. I can understand you putting your signs on federal highways and stuff like that the way you do, but out in, out in the townships, 95% of the traffic on township roads are about township residents. And these are going to create interesting occasions because I understand, like you say, that it is the township's responsibility to replace after that. But there's some cockamamie signs being put up out there and I understand it's all federal. And I want that understood is that it wasn't the county and it wasn't the township who had this dad blasted idea. But we got to maintain it.
Yeah.
After you do it.
Correct. But the signs are free to the township. I mean, you're getting all brand new signs. Replacements are not, no.
Okay.
But initially, the signs are free.
The four by four wood posts that are being replaced by the one by one channel?
Yep, about two inch, two inch Telspar post, yep.
Two inch? They have equal strength?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Really?
Yep.
The benefit of the.
Steel posts, so.
The benefit of the Telspar is if one gets knocked over, is you can literally take a couple bolts out. There's actually a piece in the ground and another piece. You can take a bolt out, cut it off, put the sign right back up. If a wood post breaks, somebody's got to go back to the shop and get a wood post. So the benefits, that's, that's basically industry standard. We haven't, in fact, we haven't done a signing project in 10 years that, whether it's a road project or anything, where wood posts were used. So it is pretty much the industry standard now. And frankly, they're cheaper than the wood posts.
I have a question.
Louis, you're here.
You missed the announcement. I was putting the phone in quiet mode. I had some questions about why the, you know, signs at an intersection, like it's, perhaps it's a T intersection, so it's not going both ways. But instead of the sign being on the side where the road is, it's across the road in the other ditch. Is there reasoning behind that?
Do you know what sort of sign?
We're talking about the road signs, you know?
Oh, the street name signs?
Street name signs. Why are they in the?
The, the federal highway standard has them placing all of them in the northeast corner where applicable. If there's a tree or something in a way and there's a visibility issue, then they'll move it. But they want as many of them as they can in that corner just for uniformity.
So even if there isn't a road on the, let's say the road is going north and there's nothing going east, but there's a westbound road, the intersection signs are now in the east ditch when the road is on the west.
If I'm understanding you correctly, yes, I believe so.
It just, it even looks odd.
Yeah.
What you're telling us is you're doing it all with federal standards?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
That would be a state standard, but it's for uniformity. And sometimes it's hard for people in one county to understand, we're trying to get this uniform in all counties.
That's a good answer. I feel comfortable sharing that. Any other questions?
I want to just circle back one, one time to your, to your liability thing. This comes up a lot of times. Just so everybody knows, I know you're probably aware of this. These, the townships were involved. There were multiple meetings with all of the townships. They knew what signs they were going to get. It's pretty typical that when they start appearing, that there is some frustration. But theirs has been in the last five years, a significant reduction in delineators and some signs that were a lot, caused a lot of aggravation in the township. So that's really been trimmed back. So for the most part, those signs that, that a township might choose not to put back up or to take down, I mean, they certainly can do that. It is their authority. But those are safety signs and I would sure not recommend that people take a safety sign down. You said it, excuse me, 95% of the people who drive on those are locals, but 5% of them are. And you'd hate to see somebody get hurt. And I'd hate to see a township board try to stand up in court and explain why they took a safety sign down because it was a nuisance to somebody. So I understand that it's hard, but a lot of thought goes into that. There's, we have lots and lots of meetings about those things. So I would really encourage you to, to think long and hard before you start taking a bunch of signs down.
Well, and that's what I've, I've been trying to push on to township people who have called me, you know, you get a hopped up meth head out there. I've pulled several of them out of fields and stuff. And if you have, if you remove that signage, you just removed your aspect of walking away from there, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Brian, is there anything else that you wanted to tell us about either the bridge contracting or bridge structure updates or anything more on the signage?
I don't have anything to add unless you guys have any questions.
I have a question. You sent out an email earlier this morning about the road closure on Northwest Jim River Road. Is it open again?
We were up there working on it today. What happened is, is I had a crew out actually working on some bridges. We're spraying around the guardrails and stuff. And they drove the pickup across and their front end dropped in, which they thought was a badger hole. And they continued to drive and then their rear end dropped in and we were lucky we caught it. What had happened is with these major rains we have gotten, it has washed some of the riprap away from the bridge and it undermined. riprap away from the bridge, and it undermined to the back of the head wall. Or, basically, what that means is that there was no dirt on the other side of the bridge. I, all you could see was a hole, but if you looked down in there, it was approximately about sixteen to seventeen feet deep.
Wow.
And we closed it right away, um, took the backhoe up there and dug it out, and for the time being, since the stream is flowing fairly heavy now, uh, we put some concrete in there, because the concrete will not erode compared to dirt, and it'll be open tomorrow. It's, and then, when, if it dries up, or when it dries up, we can get down there to place some more riprap, so we won't have these issues again.
Wow.
And your people get hurt when the truck fill in, or?
No, 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 they're doing maintenance to the bridge, they weren't driving that fast, so.
Just, it's gonna give them, give them a scare.
Yeah, it just, more and more stuff is starting to show up with the, the recent flooding, and that's something, you know, without being up there and seeing the hole in the road, uh, it's hard to determine all that, and it just continually keeps showing up. And that's, that's my worry.
Well, thank you for the update on that.
Yep.
Anything else?
Uh, we finished up chip sealing last week, I'm sure we all heard about that. Uh, I know the lake area is a tough area to deal with, we try to work with them people the best we can down there.
Um, I have a question on that. Last week you were working near the Timberland, then Deer Boulevard, and then further west.
Yep.
They came back yesterday and put fresh oil?
It's, that's the fog seal.
Fog seal. Now, is that gonna happen on all the roads, or just those two?
All the roads that were chip sealed will be fog sealed this year.
Okay. 'Cause that sure is a sticky mess.
Well, temporarily. I mean, if you were to drive on it today, it's, it's nice and solid. Um, but yes, all the roads that were chip sealed will be fog sealed, and the fog seal basically gives you the adherence of rock, so you don't get the rock chips that you would typically see if you wouldn't do that.
Well, looks like a nice job on all of that.
I appreciate that. Um, I know that, it was nice to have the contractor here in town, so we didn't get to it, I, no more than had to make a phone call, and we're getting after 301, uh, and, and all the other roads too, so.
What is the status of 301?
Uh, we gotta get the permanent striping on everything that we chip sealed yet, and I'm working with the contractor on that. He's up north currently, uh, then he'll work his way back down here because of the, the weather cycles.
But it's all done, as far as?
Correct. The chip sealing.
Chip sealed.
Yep.
I've heard good, I've heard good comments on that.
What's that?
What do you think?
I'm happy with the way things have turned out, um, especially 301. Uh, I know I've seen a lot of heavy trough traffic on that already, and it doesn't seem like it's deflecting much, and that was my concern this year with all the moisture we've had. Uh, I'm, I'm happy with it, I guess, I've heard positive comments about it, I know it's not a, it's not the perfect situation, it's not four inches asphalt, but it's what we can afford.
I've heard nothing but good comments from the people that live on it.
So, it's a compromise, and, and I guess that's what we needed to go back to, and when we initially looked at it, I know that it wasn't very desirable to, to grind these roads up, to go back to gravel for a year, but after looking at how 301 turned out, I'm, I, I don't know how somebody could complain.
Well, I appreciate your, uh, the word that comes to mind is stubbornness, but that isn't the proper word.
Well...
Stick-to-itiveness.
Stick-to-itiveness, of course, to stay the course on the, on the different cycle, because it's, it's started out to be a good cycle.
Well, I appreciate that. Stubbornness is a word I maybe have heard before, so, I don't take offense to it.
All right. Anything else, Brian?
Um, aside from that, I know that, uh, it wasn't in the five-year plan, but it was a planned project. Um, we just started work today down on Rolling Hills Drive. Uh, we're actually putting in two larger culverts, taking out a, technically, it's a culvert, uh, but it's a smaller bridge, and we're replacing it with two culverts. Um, we don't expect any traffic delays down there, um, because we are going to keep that road open, that is the only way in, the only way out for those residents. Uh, so the road will be open at all the times, and I've already talked with Paul Scherzlich, uh, if we are doing some work down there, and we would have a minor delay, they will have access in and out of there, as far as that goes. Uh, when we do get that road tuned, uh, or regraded, and, and the bridge tore out, and they'll make sure those residents have access. Uh, there may be minor, minor delays, but it's going to be very minor. Um, but there again, I've been working with Paul on that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
It was brought to my attention we didn't do a roll call, so Patty, would you do a roll call?
Patty? Here.
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 Here. Okay. Do you have a motion to go into the Board of Adjustment?
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion? All in there say aye?
Aye.
We're in the Board of Adjustment. Mr. Garrity?
Thanks for getting the system up.
Yes, yes, I'm proud of myself, I don't know how I did it, but that's all right, we'll just dingle it, yep, yep.
Give him credit.
It's the way that seems to work, but it worked. I pushed the buttons till it made it happen. Okay. Um, first one on the agenda is, is James Larson, who is asking for a variance of, of minimum yard requirement, and it was recommended for approval on, based on findings of fact from the Planning Commission of July tenth, for a minimum yard requirement variance on a side yard from seventy-five feet to twenty-five, to build an accessory structure in agriculture district in Yankton County. Said property is legally described as Track Three, West Jim River Division, Northwest Quarter, the Northwest Quarter of Section thirty-three, Township ninety-four, Range fifty-five. Herein after referred to as Mission Hill North Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. E nine-one-one address is three-six-one-six, Southwest Jim River Road, Yankton, South Dakota. So, Mr. Larson is, uh, has got a rural lot out there, um, it would be on the east side of town, Southwest Jim River Road, you kind of, it's off like north of, of the substation, Northwest Substation, okay, it's on that road there. Several different residents live along that road. I had no comments, positive or negative, towards it. Um, his structure, what's he looking at, building accessory structure that meets the requirements otherwise, but he wanted to, he has utilities that are his hardship, and also he wanted to line it up in the existing driveway, and he wants to do a forty-by-sixty accessory structure. The sixteen-foot sidewalls would be along the north property line. He also wanted to do bathroom facilities, which will require a septic system, which again takes up some of the building space, that the septic field will be out in there, uh, interior part of the lot there. Um, so, the Planning Commission recommended approval based on those hardships.
That was the Planning Commission?
The planning.
Yes.
Yep. And so, they're looking for a variance of fifty feet. Any questions?
Okay, Pat, the, the field to the north, is that his?
No.
Okay. The field to the east, is that his?
The field to the east would be, yes, it is.
The one to the east is, but the one that you're crowding in from the seventy-five down to the twenty-five is not his, and he's had it moved by the landowner for that?
It, it is his. You're, you gotta pay, you gotta back up a bit, right, there's a fence line along there, and the, the neighbor to the north has a few of his treasures down there in the corner of that fence line. That's, and that's the neighbors. And then, Mr. Larson's treasures start, and there's a, there's a white building sitting there? That is, that, that was a trailer that is gone now, and that's approximately where he's looking at running the building, but he'd run it east and west orientation along, so it'd be, the sixty-foot would be along the north property line. And then that lines it up with the existing driveway that's coming in. Where you see some of these older structures along the road, along the Southwest Jim River Road, there's several very older structures, and there's also a very large utility line going through there overhead, which came off the substation, and then he has quite a bit of underground utilities in that same area, so that limited his parking, or his building area up in that, on that west side along the road. And he owns the house on the south end of the lot there.
And his entrance was going to be, um, he was gonna go directly from the road into that building, was he not?
Yep, yep, he has that north entrance that he wants to line up. And the other structures are, are basically are going to be, um, removed over time, they're non-functioning right now, the ones along the road. Okay?
So, the driving reason for the variance, though, was the, uh, septic tank, correct?
Excuse me?
Septic tank was the real reason that he couldn't go further, or septic, excuse me?
And utilities.
Septic system, and the utilities?
And utilities.
Is the reason that he was closer to that fence line?
Yep. His above-ground and below-ground utilities are very heavy in there. Granted, there's, there's other spaces, but for him, it works out, he wants to have this nut, and then it lines up with his proposed dri, or with the existing driveway. But the utilities drove a lot of it, 'cause he wanted to have more of it on that road, but there's too many utilities there.
Any more questions for Mr. Garrity, the Board? Is anybody in the audience that'd like to speak, speak in favor of this variance? Anyone in the audience like to speak against this variance? Hearing none, I entertain a motion?
I'll move approval of the variance for James Larson, as presented by Mr. Garrity.
Of minimum yard requirement.
Yep.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I think it's worthy to make note here, that this is a variance, and you are crowding your, your seventy-foot, and it's all okay. Keep that in mind as we move forward with variance discussion, these are permissible.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next one we have is the variance for Leonel Herrera.
Um, okay, this was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission based on findings of fact on July tenth, for a maximum accessory structure size from twelve hundred square feet with twelve-foot sidewalls, to build a forty-by-sixty foot with eighteen-foot sidewalls or twenty-four hundred square feet, accessory structure in a moderate-density rural residential district in Yankton County. Said property is legal described as Lot L dash one, and the Northwest Quarter of the Northeast Quarter, excluding Lot L dash two, of the Northwest Quarter of the Northeast Quarter, and excluding the north six hundred and sixty feet of the Northwest Quarter of the Northeast Quarter, of Section twenty-four, Township ninety-four, Range fifty-four. Herein after referred to as Volin Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. E nine-one-one address is four-five-one-six-six, Bluff Road, Volin, South Dakota. Okay, take a look at your mapping, and your, and your, where your site is here, but this is along the Bluff Road, just east of Volin. And in there, we made some zoning decis, we made, we made some districts in there, and we did make a moderate-density residential district in that area. So, you've got the Volin Road, or what we'd call the Volin, and it heads over to, to the Interstate Road, is on the north boundary, and then this Bluff Road is on the south boundary. Um, about a year ago, um, a contractor came in, was building a building for Mr. Herrera and his wife, and they were gonna build what we call a chouse, okay, so there's a new term for you. So, a chouse is, is a shed house. And generally, they've been making the shed part of it, or storage part of it, bigger than the house. But they have a bedroom, and they have a kitchen, and they have a living space, and sometimes they have even three bedrooms in those chouses. This was going to be a chouse, and they wanted to build so that they had room this winter for, or would have been twenty-seventeen, to build a, this, and then they were gonna come in right away this year, in twenty-eighteen, and finish the house. And so, late November, November fifteen, twenty-seventeen, I issued a building permit, to allow them to build the, the structure with the plan that they were gonna come in, and we were gonna finish the house part next year. Mr. Herrera died, or passed away, in January. And so, the hardship is, is that I don't, I, I don't have anybody to help me finish the permit, I, I lost my applicant. And so, there's the hardship. So, what we have to do is that this application is, is to correct an administrative permit, because our applicant is deceased, and that they're not planning on continuing on with that chouse, they ju, they would like to just leave the accessory structure there. And I don't know what the widow's plan is in the future, but, um, but I think that's a reasonable hardship, and that, um, they're really, the only alternative would be to go in there and remove that shed, and I don't think that's our intention at all. I believe it's a reasonable hardship, it's twenty-four hundred square feet, it is very big, but it is also in a very rural residential district, and as of so far, have not had anyone protest against it, I've had a couple people request, what is it, are we sure it's not gonna be commercial storage or commercial building, and it will not be, it will not be, it has to stay personal, even if it sells, it's still, it's a residential district. They met the yard setbacks, they met the other setbacks, but, um, that's where we're at with that, that's how that ended up.
So, they originally had a building permit?
Yep.
And the executor of the building permit has died?
Yep.
So...
So, they're not gonna finish the house part of the shed?
Of the chouse.
Yep, of the chouse.
Questions for Mr. Garrity?
So, you need, you wanna change it from a chouse to a shed?
Yep.
Okay.
And I need a variance on that, because it's, it's oversized. And the variances for the maximum accessory structure size, up to twenty-four hundred, well, it's twenty-four hundred square feet with an eighteen-foot sidewall. But then that, that makes the structure legal. So, hardships, it's beyond the applicant's control, the applicant had good intentions, the, um, we had a plan to do it as a chouse, so we had no intentions of making it be a, a shed at the time we started building it. So, those are my hardships. Any other questions for me?
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the variance for Leonel Herrera? Is there anyone that would like to speak against the variance for Leonel Herrera? Hearing none, I entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we change the variance for Mr. Herrera from a chouse?
No, no, we're gonna, the variance is maximum accessory structure size. Approve the maximum, the, a variance of maximum accessory structure size, based on findings of fact of, of the Planning Commission, okay? That's what we're doing is, my intention was, it was gonna be that, but they never got it done. So, now it becomes an accessory structure that's, that's bigger than my maximum, so the variance is for maximum accessory structure size requirement, 'cause we're going from twelve hundred to twenty-four hundred. Okay? That make sense?
Make me sure.
That's kinda tucked back in trees, too, isn't it?
Yes.
Excuse me?
That's kinda tucked back in trees.
Yes, yep, yep. I mean, obviously, it's not, even the neighborhood hasn't, um, an issue as long as it's private. But I, what you're offering the variance on isn't so much of what the structure could have been, or where it is, it's what it is, and it has to be, you're, you're making a motion to offer variance on a maximum accessory structure size requirement.
So, that's the motion I made.
Second.
So, we have a motion to approve the variance? So we have a motion to approve the variance of maximum, maximum accessory structure from 1,200 to 2,400?
Yep.
Discussion. Oh!
I just have a question for Jim Kladik, and I live...
Just a sec, okay, just a second. We're in a motion part here, okay? What do you want to do?
I, we've, we're in the process of, of voting.
Go ahead. I just have a question.
Does it apply to this?
Yes.
It's your call.
Withdrawal motion, reopen.
I'll withdraw.
It was open for public comment. There was a for and against, nobody stood up and raised a question. Were you here then, sir?
Yes, I was. And I was neither for or against, I just have a question.
Can, can you hold the question until a comment period at the end of the meeting?
You can't take a comment based on...
Just a second, just...
A second, just a minute, that's not for you to say.
Withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
We'll open it up for comments on either for or against the variance.
Well, I neither one of those.
Please come up to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Yes.
I'm Jim Kladik, and I live at 45152 Bluff Road. The first notice I got of this building was the last meeting that you had, or about three weeks ago, roughly. Okay? And I didn't realize it at the time, but according to letter, it was as if the structure had not been built yet. Unfortunately, when I drove down the road, the structure had been built. Okay? So I was wondering how we got behind the power curve and we weren't notified that this was planned before the structure was built.
It was determined that it was initially going to be a house and a chouse, for lack of better terms. So the building permit was issued to build the chouse.
Okay.
And so...
That's legal.
That itself was legal.
So this process, it didn't have to go through this process, then is what you're telling me? Okay?
Because it was considered...
Because it was supposed to be a building or a structure with a house.
Okay, I understand that.
And so, they're not doing that anymore, so what we've got is the, the first part of the, the structure.
Okay.
That's what we've got. And we're cleaning up the administrative portion of it because it was a building permit that was originally issued. And now, since we're not going to continue to build a home, that's why we need the variance for this building that's there right now, because it's bigger than normally would have been approved for this area.
Okay, my question still remains is, did we not go through the same process for the little oversized shed as we do, do for a chouse?
No.
We do not.
Okay.
You do not, because it's got a house attached to it, that's why.
Okay, all right.
Just, and just to help you clarify, the, this district, when I issued the permit, this, the permit was for basically a house that looks like a shed. And we've started to call them chouses because more and more people are doing them. When, when my applicant passed away, then they didn't do the house part. So that, that went from being a house to an accessory structure. And when it becomes an accessory structure, it was not a legal accessory structure at that size. If they had built it at 1,200 square foot, we wouldn't have had to go through this. But 1,200 square foot's the maximum size an accessory structure can be in your district without a variance. And your accessory structure becomes that when you don't have a house and you don't live in it. Any structure that you don't live in becomes an accessory structure. That make sense?
It's a, it's a great point for the comprehensive rewrite, because your question is very good.
Yep. And so, we don't...
The letters kind of referred to this structure alone, not a chouse, and that's where I might, where I'm confused.
And you wouldn't have got a letter on the chouse because it's a house.
Yep, because the original intent was supposed to be a house.
Confused, all right, all right.
So, that's where it would go through that process, and then that's when you start getting the letters for this, to make that building legal.
Thank you, thank you for your question.
Sorry about interruption.
No problem. So now I need a motion.
So I'll resubmit my motion.
To...
For the high-end, maximum variance requirement, accessory structure size.
Second. Well, I think, from my point of view, down the road, we need to address this in the comprehensive rewrite because this is, this is, I mean, I go up where we hunt up north, and there's lots of these up there. And they're pretty sizable buildings.
Patty, roll call vote.
Ray?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to go back into regular session?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We're back in regular session. Pat, you have, um, next item?
Yep.
Rezone from ag to planned unit development district, PUD.
This was, so this is a, the next session is for Carl Schenk, and it's a request for a rezone. And so pursuant to Article 18 in 1809 of the, for findings of fact on July 10th, a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve a rezone from agriculture district to a planned unit development district in Yankton County. Said property is legally described as the northwest quarter of Section 16 Township 93, Range 57, and the north half of the southwest quarter, and the south half of the southwest quarter, excluding Track B-233 of Section 16 Township 93, Range 57, and the south half of the southeast quarter of Section 16 Township 93, Range 57. Hereina referred to as Ziskoff Township, Ziskoff South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. E-911 address will be TBA of 130th Avenue, Tabor, South Dakota. As you can see from the findings that we put together, we, we talked about this quite a bit. We went through several different things there. The planned unit development, as far as the planning and zoning offices, from its standpoint, it feels like it recommended the planned unit development over a low-density development, or because it would be, reduce our costs for infrastructure. It will offer covenant restrictions that all meet or exceed the regulations of the county zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. And with that strong declaration of covenants and conditions, it will allow future enforcement to be conducted by the homeowners association of the, of the planned unit development. The property is also bordered by the Missouri River and public land to the south and by the Boy Scout camp to the west. Let's see, we did talk about ownership, or excuse me, access to the river area and access roads. We do have in your packets information regarding various affidavits and, and information regarding access to that development for your review and, and et cetera. So, we had made the conclusion that the Planning Commission, that, that based on the evidence that was put forth, that access is, is, meets our requirements as a planning office and as a planning directive. So then, everything else was met as far as signage, utilities, those types of things. And we do have what's called the subdivision preliminary plat that will come up after this, that shows you what the lots are and how they'll be laid out and the infrastructure that goes with that. So we, it was recommended for approval for a rezone from an agriculture district to a planned unit development district. Any questions for me?
And that's about approximately 80 acres?
Approximately, yeah.
And it includes majority of 430th Avenue to, to the river, or to the lake, I should...
That's in part of it, yep.
Yes.
After you leave the Boy Scout camp.
And then there was that little jog. Remember that little square?
That's an existing lot that sits down there, and that also makes for access to the next lots that run across to the east.
Will this be portioned off in 20-acre lotments?
No, the subdivision plan that comes up next shows it, but it's already all set, what we're going to do. And it, those, and then also remember, you know, this covenants and everything that's in there, the covenants are what I will utilize for any enforcement, and these are as strong, if not stronger, than the zoning ordinance. So the covenants are, are what we can, are what we utilize for enforcement, too. The lots in that subdivision are going to be anywhere from, from 13 up to 20, 30. Some lots are going to be 30 acres. We have 15 lots being proposed. I'd like to mention one more thing, too, about this. This was talked about during the hearing, but, but you do have, you do have some other subdivisions out there, and you also have some other planned unit developments out there. And one of them is Deerfield Estates, so that would be out there on Highway 50 and near where the Motorcycle Bike Club is area. That one was started in the, after zoning started. That now has a $4.1 million taxable valuation in that development there. One that's not a, a planned unit, but is still a development, it's under the R2 Development District, is Marina Dela Estates, and that one has a $13 million taxable valuation. So there, these are obviously very good for the county and its tax base and, and its potential of, of increasing tax income.
We've got total clarification on the issue of the, the section of road that was...
We feel so. We have, we have backing and personal contact from the title company. We have evidence from our various input from, from, that have been provided to us by various, by the applicant, and we feel that everything's there to meet our requirements.
Patty, so there'd be some covenants required. Is there, are there any provisions for like an association to be set up?
Yes, has to. Yep, it's in there.
I think there'll be in the next session.
This is very good. This is very well done, and go ahead, you know, again, it's in here, too, but it is one of the things that they have to do, it's one of the conditions, and it has to be an active one. It has to be one I can work with, and that's what we do over at Deerfield, too. And then, as we'll talk about in the subdivision ordinance part there, too, we'll talk about how that works in terms of the future planning, but we'll settle this one first. Any other questions for me?
Only have the whole week.
Okay.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this PUD?
Commissioners, I'm Ross Denherter, and I've been retained by Mr. Schenk to promote this application. Mr. Schenk apologizes, as many of you know, his health is somewhat volatile, and today he's not having a very good day. So, I'm here on his behalf. This particular application for a variance, I think, is in keeping with the county's comprehensive plan for development. There is a development lying immediately to the east that's already...
Just point of order, I don't think it's a variance we're talking about today. We're talking about a rezone?
I'm sorry, rezone, correct. Thank you for correcting me on that. The PUD plan is, is sort of a, a self-developing development, and it's self-policing with good covenants. So, we've took extra care to prepare good, understandable covenants that I think will help everybody get, get along with each other and minimize the input and, and staff time of the county in this particular development.
So I think those are going to come up in the, the next item on the agenda, which is the preliminary plan for the Lake Forest Estates?
Indeed, yep. Those all tie together with this.
So the fact that you're zoning this from ag to a PUD is all in preparation for this?
That is correct. They're separate actions by this commission, but they all tie to one development plan here. But this is, we can't have the, the approval of the preliminary plat until the rezone is in place first.
Correct.
Does anybody have any other questions regarding the rezoning? Or for the sake of time, I suppose, I could also address some questions regarding the development.
I got to vote on them twice, so...
I'll wait and address those questions later, then.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak against this PUD, rezoning from ag to a PUD? Any more questions from the commission? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve the rezoning from ag to a planned unit development district for Carl Schenk.
Second.
Discussion.
This is an outstanding area to, to place parole residents, and having read carefully those covenants, it's very detailed, and looks to be like, it should get down a lot of issues going forward.
And I think one of the key things they brought up is the potential for increasing the tax base with, with homes that are being built out there on area that's not arable. It's not, it's, it's hills and it's trees and it's not currently...
I think to help you a little bit more, I think it also helps a bit, I, if, if we're looking at the long-term, again, Mr. Kettering was talking about comprehensive plan, but I believe the comprehensive plan in time should, should take a good hard look at that western area all the way to our, from Highway 50 south all the way to our western border there as far as preserving that for residential. And now we'll have a big piece of it going into PUD, maybe in the future we can put the rest of it in RT, and then we're being progressive about looking at, that's where it's going to go, so we should be preparing for it. But this is a nice big piece to get started again, that continues to put it into residential.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Correction, need to have a, need to, let's back that up and say, let's have a roll call vote.
Ray?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Let me see. All right, the next one is for the preliminary plan for Lake Forest Estates.
Okay, so preliminary plan just takes, when we, now the subdivision ordinance kicks in. So the ordinance you've been working with is ordinance number 16, that's the zoning ordinance. Subdivision ordinance is, is ordinance number 20. So it talks about how are we going to lay something like this out? You're coming in with a bare piece of ground, what do we need to do? And it does a lot of things, and one of them is, it starts out with the sketch plan, and when the applicant comes in, many times, they are literally on a napkin. And then we in the office will approve those and work through that and get that to where we can get a surveyor to, to start laying it out for us. And then we end up with what's called a preliminary plat. And the preliminary plat is in front of you now on this. And this preliminary plat is, is the best shot at this present time of the developer to say, this is what I want this to be. Now, there's some real benefits to developers sticking with this plan because each time they sell one of these lots, they don't have to go through the entire hearing process now. They can just come in, get their plat approved, they can make the sale after you approve this. So, as long as this preliminary plat stays the way it is, then any of the plots that come through on those 15 would be considered minor plots that could be approved promptly at the next commission meeting. So that's one big reason why the developers are working with it. A reason why we want it is, is what we talked about in, in my findings there. We want to know about infrastructure, I want to know where the utilities are, I want to know how we're accessing it. Are we doing easements? Are we doing right-ofways? Are we doing, how big are the lots? Are we making sure we have buildable space? And that's all done through this subdivision ordinance. So Mr. Schenk met all the requirements for that, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the, of the preliminary plat, which is just the preliminary plat. It doesn't prove each of those plats because you're going to find out you're approving real plats later. This is preliminary, final plats are later.
Pat, is this a preliminary plan?
It's a, or preliminary plan or plat, either way. We're calling it a plan here. And so it can be either way, that's interchangeable. And it's to Article 4 of Section 402 of the Yankton subdivision ordinance. This is based on findings of fact of July 10th to approve the preliminary plat for Lake Forest Estates Planned Unit Development District of PUD in Yankton County. So said property is legally described as the northwest quarter of Section 16, the north half of the southwest quarter, and the south half of the southwest quarter, excluding Track B-23 of Section 16, and the south half of the southeast quarter of Section 16, Range 93, or Township 93, Range 57. Hereina referred to as Ziskoff South Township, County of Yankton, State of South Dakota. E-911 address will be appointed as the lots are sold, but will be off of... E nine-one-one address will be appointed as the lots are sold, but will be off of Fourth Thirtieth Avenue. And all the requirements were met. And as I say, we also have that checklist in the back and then you actually see the preliminary plan that we're approving. Any questions for me? This is the second one we've done. This is a good deal. We're on our way.
Questions for Pat? Does anyone in the audience like to speak in favor of this preliminary plan for Lake Forest Estates?
Again, Ross Denherter for Carl Schenck. As Pat indicated, essentially what you're doing is approving the master plan, just to make it easier for the developer as each individual lot is sold. It allows us to skip the planning and zoning commission each time. However, we can't change the covenants. We can't change the lot design. We're limited to this plan. If there's going to be a change to the master plan, it has to be brought back to the planning and zoning and brought back before this board for approval of the comprehensive change of the entire subdivision. So I hope that gives you guys some comfort moving forward. It streamlines the process, but only if we commit to what we're showing you today.
And there are fifteen, fifteen lots, I believe, including that one tiny little one?
Yeah, inclusive of the tiny one. The tiny one has its own legal description already, however, for the sake of convenience, we'll give it a lot description here because its description is a little strange.
But I see twenty acres is a predominant size. We've got a couple thirties, thirty, thirty.
On average. Yeah, there's a few, there's a couple that are as big as thirty-eight. But if you average them all out, it's, it's just shy of twenty acres per lot. If you guys will recall, the middle chunk of this is what was the subject of that quiet title action that we worked through this board last year. This is the next step in that process.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak in favor of this preliminary plan? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak against this preliminary plan? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I have a motion that we accept a preliminary plan for Lake Forest Estates.
Discussion.
Okay, Pat, it takes me a while. We're accepting the plots the way they set right here. So somebody comes in here, for instance, and buys lot for thirty acre point two seven. They cannot split that without coming back before us again and change that.
That is correct.
Okay. Now, I read about eighty pages of that dad blasted company. My brain was potato soup. So... I don't know how to present my questions, so I'll pass.
Just remember, you can't, everything that's there, roads and everything, someone can't come in and say, I don't want to buy that whole thing, I only buy fifteen acres of it. Some, they can't. They have to come back in front of the whole board. We'd have to reissue the whole thing. If anything changes on this, it has to come back. Anything. No subdividing, no changing, no moving lot lines and no changing uses either. Like, like Mr. Denherter said, they can't all of a sudden start raising, building trailers down there either because the covenants say you can't. They, that's all stipulated. Like I say, the covenants for a residential district are stronger than what we request on our, on our zoning and that's everything from accessory structures to use.
But it's a, say, a public hearing, numbers of animals have been defined, everything...
Yes, yes, yep.
To include cats, as I recall.
Mm-hmm. I mean, it is. It's really broke. And so, any, any question that may come along, if a resident is living in there and they want to contest that, we're going to go back to the covenant and we will, we, and say this is what it is. And that's what we do currently at our, at our current PUDs also.
Pat?
As long as they're more restrictive than Yankton County zoning.
Pat, yeah, just a hypothetical, could they buy two plots, a thirty-eight and a thirty or whatever? Put them back together?
Yes.
They could?
Yep. They couldn't do that, but they can't split and remove the lines unless they come in and ask. But nothing, nothing administrative. Just let's, so anything can be done, but nothing administrative after this point. It has to stick what they say.
And to follow Gary's train of thought, they can't combine them together and then reduce their taxes because now they don't have residential.
They can't combine them together because they'd have to go through a plat process and if they go through that, they're back in front of us and we say, what's this? This is under a PUD. Yep. You remember? You got it back in your head there, Ray? Are you okay?
I'm okay.
All right. Okay.
So I believe we had a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same time. Motion passes. Next is plat for Carl Schenck.
Yes.
Lot one.
Okay, so I have a PUD now, a rezone. I have a preliminary path that's approved and so now I have lot one off of this preliminary plat, platted just like the preliminary was. It's requested to actually plat lot one. And no, you know, that's, no comments, nobody said anything negative.
Or positive.
So that's just one of fifteen that is being platted now?
We're just doing number one.
Yes.
Yep, one of fifteen. Lot number one.
Anybody want to speak in favor of this plat? Would anyone like to speak against the plat? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Prove approval of the plat, lot one, Lake Forest Estates.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same time. Motion passes. Okay, Pat, you got the next one.
Okay?
Yep.
All righty.
Yours.
So a little bit behind, so we'll move along here. I have requested in some of our public hearings and during planning commission to, to take a look and review Article six, seven, and eight regarding section six oh five, seven oh five, and eight oh five, which is accessory structures. We're doing an awful lot of variances per year on those. And I know I just did one, but that, I, I'm, and, but we, we're doing an awful lot of variances and I, I believe the way that we have it set in the ordinance has been too difficult to enforce. It's not necessarily enforceable because we have such various sized lots out there on various sites and various districts. So if you have, you have, your district say they're supposed to be a half acre and an acre and five acres, but they're not, they're all over the place. And so I'd like to take another look at this and we amended it back in two thousand six. And so why don't we take another look at this? I think we need to compare ourselves a little bit more with the city of Yankton. And we need to take another look at our, our metrics, what we're using. Right now, we just simply say a size, eight hundred, twelve hundred, two thousand. And we have too many variables out there in our lot sizes to make a very rigid, just size fit our, our requirements. The other issue is, is that we're watching and seeing the trend out there and the, and the consumer trend out there is for bigger sheds. They're getting bigger campers, they're getting bigger boats, they're getting bigger toys. And we need to be aware of that, otherwise we're always fighting this issue. So I'd like to take a look. It would be the same way we did the signs for Highway fifty-two. We could start with some public meetings, get some input from the public and start building on it, start changing the language a little bit and go through the change process.
I think that sounds like a good idea. I mean, being on the zoning commission, I know we see variances for buildings and we want people that, or people want large buildings for, for the various reasons that you've said. And they can't always be approved. But I think the public's input is necessary for all these. I mean, I think they would be, provide good insight as to what was really needed out there.
Yep. Take another look at it. It's been ten years.
Two thousand and five, exactly. It was in two thousand and five, so it's actually been...
Was it? Okay, yeah.
Thirteen years.
Are these same implications going to be applied in ag zone districts?
Yep.
Not just since two thousand and five there also?
But this would take a look at specifically this and let me, let me, but I do agree. We do have to take a look at that whole program too, but that's, at least for right now, I want to work on this. This is a, this to me, this particular ordinance change is the hot button right now that we're working so much with. Almost every meeting, we have one of these and we're not, I don't think we're satisfying. We have a dual purpose here. One is, is that we have citizens that are in the county that depend on zoning to protect, to say, this is what the rule is, this is what we're saying, this is what we're going to do. And then they feel like all of a sudden we're not following that. And I think that when we're not following it, let's stop, take a look and see why we're not following it. What's, what's, what's happening? What's changing? What's making it different? And that's what I'd like to do with this one.
So what do you want, just an approval to...
To start.
Start your meetings and get a group of citizens together and have scheduled meetings as you did with the sign ordinance?
Yep. And I'd need one commissioner to volunteer to be the liaison for that that shows up at the meetings. All of you can come, everybody can come, but I need one to be my, my liaison for that, liaison for that. So whoever you do with that, that's fine.
Okay.
We would start right away.
And do you have a proposed night?
Yep. I propose Mondays, probably the last one of the month. That's the only one I got open besides Friday. And I'm not going to give you Friday.
Well, I think we have unanimous approval here, against having this group?
Are you going to advertise for people from the public to volunteer to be on the meeting?
Yep, yep. Do a general meeting in the beginning and then from that, see who wants to be active for each of the meetings and, and go through the normal process that we do for ordinance changing. Yep. Find the, find the stakeholders, who wants to be involved the most, who's in there, who's the stakeholders, and then develop a good policy. I think we have to look at several things. There's several different metrics one can use for, for this. They don't have to be based on just physical size. There's, there's property size, there's several metrics that we should take a good look at and see what makes the best sense for us.
Sounds good.
I'd like to share my opinion.
All right, there you got your commissioner.
There I got my commissioner. Okay. All right, that's what I need. That doesn't need a motion or, or anything in that regard. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, we're on to the five-ten item of installing a veterans parking spot. Mr. McDonald, Mr. Feifel.
Midwest Striping wants to, well, they approached Jeff on this about setting up a parking sign, reserved for veterans here at the government buildings, either in the two parking lots. And we're letting you know that they have offered to put this sign up and, and mark the, mark the spot.
They, they would, they volunteered to put it up in any location that, that we would like. They would put it up with their own post, their own manpower and donate everything, no charge.
And you were already planning on restriping the parking lot?
Yes, yeah. That's why when I talked to him about restriping the parking lot, he came to us with this.
And they've got a...
Yep.
They've got another one and it says, it's a super parking, or superhero parking, reserved for vets, active military, law enforcement, fire, EMS, and search and rescue personnel. Thank you for serving. And it has their, their little donated sign on it.
I think, I think the, the reserve for veterans is good.
Yeah, it's, it's up to, it's up to the commission, whoever...
We've seen them all over town. We're seeing those reserved for veterans all over town.
Yep.
You, you're going to put one in front, one in the back?
That's up to the commissioners, wherever...
I'd like to see one in front, one in the back.
Okay. Just have to discuss where we want them then and have them placed.
I think it's great. I think it's a great idea.
Next to the handicap so it's easy for them to get entrance.
Okay.
Would be my suggestion.
Yeah, right towards the, towards the front here, you know?
One over there and one over there.
Probably put one over right here. So let's walk, you know, right off the sidewalk, heading up towards the Veterans Memorial.
I think the two parking lots.
Yeah, and this, there's a spot right here outside.
There's a handicap on either side.
Okay.
So we can put it over there. Yep. It'll be fine.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, we'll let them know.
Make it happen.
Thank you for, thank you for doing that.
No problem.
Mr. McDonald, can you handle this?
Again, I want to compliment you on the condition of that yard and the building.
I guess, well, he was up there, I could have knocked you out. Go ahead and come back. We'll knock out his report on our buildings and the leakage.
Thank you.
Well, since arriving, obviously, in my short time that I've been here, that we've had water leakage mainly on that north side of the building where the, the false windows are over there right now. And obviously, we all understand that we've had excessive amounts of water. Today, we had Blackburn basements here, taking a look at some of my findings and they agree with a big majority of what I'm showing them. Basically, they did a, they did a pour and then they let it dry and then they did another pour on top. Well, that's below the ground level. So there's nothing sealing the two concretes together. They're held together firmly, probably with, you know, pieces of rebar and things, but that will not stop water from leaking between the two pores. So they're, they came today and they're going to look at getting us a proposal and I'll check with another person that was, as far as basement renovation and sealing in the meantime, but they're talking about exactly what I'm thinking is they have to clean the outside face, remove the dirt, clean the outside face, and then put a sealant on the outside that the, so that the water doesn't wick through those seams when we have...
Because it is leaking downstairs...
Yes.
At, at the mall.
Yep. And then there's also those, that false where they put the tin over those windows, the seams on those interlock, but the tops of those seams are not sealed. So when we have a driving wind, the water runs up, runs into those seams and runs down. And then we're getting more water there also. That I can take care of pretty easily. The other portion is something that, and the worst part about this is, and there's a, I've got some pictures here, is they did like a false stucco on that concrete, so that either has to be sandblasted off or ground off before you put any kind of a sealant on there, otherwise it's not going to work. So like I said, they're, they're in the process of getting us a quote. They should have it within a couple of days on what it would cost to do that.
Any other buildings that are leaking?
We have, we still have a small leak over at the extension office. We've had some leaks over at the EMS. I think I've got those solved. We had some, some of the rubber roofing coming loose. I sealed those up. That one, we had that six inches in about twenty minutes. We did have some at the safety center, but luckily I went up that same evening. What happened was there's just enough leaves collected around the, the downspouts because they're inside the roof and it plugged them up. So I went up and dug all those out and then it was gone. But there was, there was six inches of water on that roof, which is a lot of weight.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Paul, cell tower.
I don't know. I've got a couple of things. I don't know if you're familiar with the picture I sent you. Probably wasn't a real good one of the site. It's the old Dennis Field Meyer place. On, on, uh, four thirty, uh, four thirty-three in South Dakota Highway fifty. Uh, it used to be the county's civil defense tower, but we had to repeat it for a couple of pages. I was trying to show you the best location that I sent you, but on the second page is the actual tower that's out there. It's by the big blue water tower west of town here. Many years ago, when they redid Highway fifty and made it a road coming into town on that way, the construction, from my understanding, what I was told, the construction company that did the work put the tower up. And then they didn't want to take it back down, they gave it to the county. And the highway department, many years ago, used it for a while. People way before my time used it for the civil defense repeater tower. We're paying a, a land rent where the tower is set at. Right now, we're currently paying eighteen hundred dollars a year on that, just to have the tower sit there, even though we own it, we have to insure it.
We don't use it.
We don't, well, we don't use it anymore. Our repeater tower now is sitting on top of Napa, on the new facility out in Napa Junction. So my, what I'm asking you guys, and I was talking with Rob, is that, I'm asking you guys to surplus this piece of property, and then we'll need to get three people, correct me if I'm wrong here, Rob, three people to give evaluation on it. And then whether we ought to sell it, if there, you know, if it's worth anything. The cell tower, or the, the radio tower people that I talked to said that it's so old that it's crowding between the bolts. You know, if you take it down, putting it back up is probably not going to be a thing. The other thing is that if we have to remove it, it's real easy to push it over. The hard part is digging that great big cube of concrete out from underneath of it. So we'll have a lot of expense tied up into, they figured that the height of the tower is sixty-eight feet. It's about a fifteen by fifteen by fifteen-foot concrete block buried under the ground to hold that freestanding tower. So, you know, and again, that's an estimate. I talked with Brian. Is Brian in here? He's, he's willing to go out and dig it out, but that's going to take a lot of time, you know, and monies that we'd, so my suggestion in my notes, I says, let's offer it to the guy that owns the land. It's a new person now. Uh, Robert Ozamore, I think is how you pronounce his last name. He bought the place from Mr. Field Meyer. The rent is going to go up next year. To what, I don't know at this time, but we have no use for it. So I, I said in the notes, just get rid of it. But to do it the way it's supposed to be, well, you guys will have to surplus it, and then we'll have to get an estimated cost by three individuals. Is that correct, Rob? And then decide whether it's, whether we're going to sell it, we can offer it for zero, we'll have to get that details worked out. But I guess the big thing tonight would be is the declared surplus, and then we can move forward with that. Would that be correct, Steve, or Rob?
And then the three quotes are to dismantle it?
No.
Is that what we're looking for?
What the value, what the value of the tower is sitting there right now.
Oh. Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but you're saying that if you propose to sell it to him for a dollar, like it says, then he's responsible for that concrete?
He's, it's his tower then. It's his property, he can do whatever he wants with it.
Okay.
You know, if we get rid of it. And I, we can't offer it for a buck. I mean, legally, we got to go through the process, as I had mentioned. But we need to surplus it first, then go, I mean, it might only be a buck in the end, but I don't know. But we don't need it, I'm, I have it insured under my insurance over at the office. But, you know, well, in case something, it falls over and crushes a car or something, it's still our tower. So we need to get rid of it.
Because they're paying rent on it and insurance.
Yeah. Well, the rent's paid.
Okay.
But next year, I'd like to get rid of it here as quick as we can, and we'll, I'll work with Rob to, through the process.
Make a motion that we declare this tower surplus. Did you see how tall it is?
Sixty-eight feet.
Sixty?
Yep.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Ebb to declare this tower-
Surplus.
-surplus. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor of making the radio tower surplus, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Our next, this is the next tour around here. I got two items. So what we'll do is I'll get with Rob, do we, can we, who do we select?
Real property owners in Yankton County.
So that's, is it basically up to these guys or somebody that I find or?
Up to the commissioner.
What was that?
You have to point three people that are real property owners in Yankton County to appraise this.
Can't have a to, a tower company look at it and tell me what it's worth?
You can get it appraised officially, you could, but-
Okay.
If you get an independent, we can sweep, come back later and find somebody that's willing to come up to value, because you can get it appraised. You can find three people that are willing to value.
Just, just their own, based on their own knowledge, their value.
One, two, three.
Let's see. Are there three people in the audience that'd like to do this?
You could nation office, they're used to definitely value.
One, two, three.
We'll find three people.
Okay. All right. The next item up for, up for my discussion is that we've been, I've been working with the townships, township boards after all the heavy rains in June, July. We've put together a damage assessment. If you turn to page, I believe it's page two, or maybe it's three, page three in the back. These are the dollar valuations that we've kind of come in with so far. There's still extra costs, and I talked with the state, there's, we have no idea whether it's going to even make. We've met the threshold. The threshold for Yankton County is eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and some odd and change. We've exceeded that. But now, to go forward, we need to do a declaration for disaster or for, basically to get, if, if FEMA does come in. The state needs one point three to one point five million dollars overall. And right now, I don't know if they're going to, the biggest problem they're having right now is if they can tie the storms that happened up north to the storms that happened down here. The Weather Service, the last I had heard is the storms that happened up, and what I mean by north, up by Aberdeen and that area, was a different storm than the one we got our rain on. So that's two different events. They can't be tied together.
By Joe, Clay County and U County got hit real hard.
Right. Clay County's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Turner County's about three hundred thousand dollars. But altogether, we're still less than a million bucks. But that doesn't mean that, they're still working numbers. But we need to do, what I'm asking you today is to pass this declaration. Rob drew it up. The one I sent you was not even close to being right. I was just winging it that day I was doing it. But we needed to get something so that at least they could put it on your guys' agenda. They have a new copy. They sent it over today. Deb's got it, I believe, in front of her. We need this declaration. We'll send, all this stuff has actually been sent to peer already to be put into the thing, but we need this paperwork to go along with it.
That's all for roads?
Roads, bridges, culverts, anything with the townships. I got some of the stuff from Brian. He's still got other things to be added, but the big thing was to get stuff in and started and make sure that we went over the eighty-three thousand. Because if we didn't, you know, if we didn't get to that dollar mod, it wasn't worth the time of putting it in. Yes.
You've got a hundred thousand on here, but any idea at all, just a guess, of what it could be?
If I had to make an edge, a real, I'd say we're pretty close, about two and a quarter. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, I think, overall, after everything is done. The big thing that's not in this packet, and what you don't see is the labor to do it all. The township's worked really hard to get prices and all this stuff, what it's going to cost, but they don't have their labor costs in a lot of these. So that still has to be added into that. And they're working on that, but right now, this was what we had to start with. It puts us over the threshold to making that, being able to send off to peer. So I had to guess it'd be about two and a quarter.
Okay. So, question, more comments, Ray?
I was going to move to a, for a resolution.
Okay. I need to read this resolution. Do we need to approve it first and then read it, or?
I think you should read it.
Right.
I mean, right, before you approve it.
Okay. So this is Yankton County Resolution Number eighteen dash five, Resolution Declaring An Emergency Flooding, twenty, two thousand and eighteen. Whereas Yankton County, South Dakota, has received above-normal precipitation in June and July two thousand and eighteen, which has caused severe damage to its county and township roads. And whereas Yankton County has evaluated all available resources for funds needed to make necessary improvements and repairs to said roads. And whereas all resources for funds were exhausted prior to June sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. And whereas the total cost for repairs and improvements are expected to be far in excess to what local resources are able to provide. And whereas the resulting damage and destruction will endanger and threaten the health, safety, and welfare of the public and the financial stability of the local governing units and the utility companies and power companies generally. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Yankton County Commissioners does hereby declare a flooding emergency dated this seventh day of August, two thousand and eighteen. Do we have a, a motion to approve the resolution?
Is this discussion, questions still open?
Just a sec. Is, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
You had a hundred thousand on here and you took a guess at two hundred and twenty-five.
There's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars with the damages there.
If you look at the second page there, it says a hundred and fifty-nine.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand doesn't seem like enough.
Well, and to be honest with you, until all the paperwork's in, I, I'm just guessing. I mean, and if the thing is, if the stuff doesn't get in, this is all we got registered. I mean, unfortunately, we've been working with the townships, it's been learning experience with, for both of us, especially with the new FEMA requirements that are come out that we're trying to cope with. But, I mean, it could be way, I mean, I, I have no idea. You know, until we get all the figures in and all that stuff.
Could be in the millions.
I, yeah, yeah. Who knows? I'm not, I'm not going to say.
Just-
Yeah. And I know Brian, like, he still has some stuff that he needs to get on here. This was, and these are, like, Brian, I believe, were just costs of expenses or the, not the labor.
And you said labor's not on there yet, so.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same time. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Just one, an FYI, and I'm going to get out of here. In a couple of weeks, we're going to be having a meeting, and I would like to see if one of you two can make it. We're going to have a township meeting with all the townships and with Brian, with District Three, to talk about pre-disaster mitigation, pre-disaster mitigation grants that the townships and maybe the county on the disaster, we can maybe get some grant money to help offset some of the costs.
Any idea when that is?
No. I just actually got done with District Three about twenty minutes before I got here that we're going to, we have this meeting.
On that meeting that you're having on the twentieth or twenty-first?
Twentieth, I believe.
Twentieth.
Is that the only?
No. I sent you an email back. We're having another one later in the year for those who, later on, for those who couldn't make it, the twentieth.
Thank you.
Yep. But I think it's important to know what's going on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay. Ms. Hoffman, yes. You're here to request transfer of property discarded as a nuisance-
Yes.
From Yankton County to the town of Utica.
Yes. Correct. My name is Sherri Hoffman. I'm the Town Board President for the town of Utica. I was doing some research recently and realized that several of the properties within the city of Utica are actually owned by Yankton County. Several years ago, and I want to estimate maybe two thousand and fifteen or sixteen, we did declare those properties nuisance items and didn't want to have those torn down. We were waiting, we realized that they were behind in taxes and didn't quite know the full process, worked with our attorney, who has since not represented us anymore. So, I have, I did have three properties placed in your packets.
Right.
The first two clearly state through Beacon that they are owned by Yankton County. The third does not, but it has been, no taxes paid for it in that same length of time. So I, I don't know that I can speak about that one, and if I can't, that's perfectly fine. We can address it later.
It's in the process. It won't, I think, until the first of the year, until it comes to the first of the year, it won't become ours.
Sure.
Truly.
That's not a problem. I can either, even if you wanted preemptive, great. If not, if I have to come back, I'd be happy to do so.
I, I'm aware of the two of them because I talked to our maintenance supervisor who is over there taking care of these places, I guess, Muller.
Right. Yes, that did start this year. Yes, correct.
Just the one or the two?
Both. Both. Yes.
So, the double-wide trailer is an eyesore.
Absolutely.
It looks like it's even a-
There are several areas that cause us concern with gaps for obviously moisture and snow and things, and then also wild animals.
Yeah. Wild animals, what about, you know, kids breaking in there? I mean, all sorts of things.
Correct.
I mean, it looks just like-
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Probably January, December, GOED came out with a program, and it was offered, and I think we sent letters in the county, or-
Or township.
In the county, suggesting that if they had dilapidated properties, the GOED had funds to be applied for to tear those properties down and clean them up.
When I read that, I did understand that they had to be part of a community's Main Street kind of program, and that you had to have a plan to build something. And since these were residence items, I didn't think that that would apply to us. But I did get that letter. Thank you.
It would have applied.
Would it have? Okay.
Is it gone? Is it still available?
I can't tell you for sure.
You said January of this year?
Yeah, I think so. That's my guess.
Okay. I can certainly do some research on that.
Where's the end of last year?
Okay.
From what I, the first go-through in the program, because of the two covenants that you talked about, it didn't attract as much attention as they thought it might. And then I believe they came back with the same program and reduced that requirement to replace. Because they're-
Yeah.
And today, on TV, there was a program about somebody in Detroit coming in, blighted thirty square blocks.
Blighted, blighted homes.
Nice.
Yeah, just do what you're doing.
Yes, that is our current plan. We would love to be able to clean those homes up.
Great thing to do.
And I know too that Habitat for Humanity is looking for lots, you know, and I can't say that this would be naturally one they'd like, but I mean, we've asked the smaller towns if they're, they have a lot that they would like Habitat to come in and, you know, build a house on. So, I mean, before I knew that you were looking at this, I've, I'm on the Building Committee for Habitat, and I was actually thinking of these very same things, and I was talking to the treasurer and the auditor about, you know, how do you go about transferring these things? How do you go about legally getting them to belong to somebody else? So, I commend you on wanting to do something. Do you have a plan, like, for example, this double wide? What are you going to do?
Currently, we're going to take it away, dispose it properly through whatever means are necessary. I need to do some research on that, how to properly dispose it.
Does it have wheels?
It does, but it's also so dilapidated side that I would be concerned about its making, I need to find someone who can do it properly, honestly. I can't make a bigger mess for the environment than it's already going to be.
So, once you get it off there, then what's your plan?
My plan is to turn into a green space for now, until we can discuss or decide what's best for that particular lot. Now, it's only a 60-foot lot, so to me, in my head, and not knowing a lot about size proportion, that it may not make a great spot for a home, because I have an alley that runs along the north side of it. So that causes a little bit of, how do I properly position a home in that small area? So that would be, right now, to me, a green space makes sense, and with something in the future to be determined, perhaps.
Let's talk about the second property.
The one place that has a trailer house, the land is the one, but the trailer house taxes aren't just this year.
Oh, really? Okay. I know that they'd had some charitable donors for that.
The treasurer's office can't do anything with the trailer until later on this year.
Do you have a restment estimate?
No, I don't. You'll have to talk to the treasurer.
Sure, absolutely. I'll be right there.
But the land taxes aren't like this.
Got it. Thank you.
Let's see.
If you're interested in researching the GOED thing, give me the phone line, I'll let you know.
That would be great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, that's the double wide.
Yes, and so we'll move to the next property. I roughly gave it an address of 310 Main Street. Know that this house has never had a house number on it. It was in this condition when I moved into town 18 years ago. So it is completely boarded, as you can see just from this one angle. It is my understanding that there is no running water to it. Obviously, there, there has to be services, obviously for sewer. So, we do have a gentleman who does set traps inside and catches wild animals, so obviously, I'm excited to have that gone, because I don't need any more in town.
So that's the one that's on?
Yes, it'll be a picture that looks like this. Correct, yeah. That's the one I labeled Hard House, correct.
Hard House.
Yes.
Do we know anything about that one? Patty, is that one? See that they haven't paid any taxes?
There's actually two of them that I just talked with the treasurer with, and that we really can't do anything with until later on in the year.
Because of the house?
Which two they were?
The 205 First Street and the 211 Second Street.
Got it, okay. That's the third one. I said I wasn't sure if the county owned it.
Okay, so this 310?
Main Street.
Is free and clear. Is that correct?
As I have, those, the ones two I mentioned were the only ones that I knew of.
Yeah, and when I was talking to the treasurer, she also told me about one of those, and I believe it's this one that's not encumbered. So, State's Attorney is, do we have the ability just to, I think I have, I have the law here? It says we can, the Governing Board of Public Subdivision may sell, trade, loan, destroy, or otherwise dispose of any land, structure, equipment, or other property which a governing body has by appropriate motion. And...
It can be the same. You just declared it's a surplus. It can be of public use, and then for whatever terms you want to give it to a legal subdivision, you can do it, and there's no rules. Can be free, can be whatever you want it to be.
And your plan for this one is?
Currently, to be a green space. I am interested, it does sit next to the city shed, and I'm interested in replacing the city shed and might do it that way, but I need to speak to the rest of the board, because that's just my personal thought right now. But for sure, we're going to leave it as a green space until we make a final decision.
One last thing, pretty much.
Should have called three weeks ago.
We moved for years before, so we, I understand completely. And we did take all the trees around it down. They were much worse, so.
So all we need then is a motion to make this residence?
Surplus it.
Surplus it?
Yep.
And transfer it to the city of Utica.
Whatever terms you want it to be.
Do we know for sure that we can do that with this last one? I know those other two are still late, but that...
Yeah, Patty, you only think of the local, you're only, we're only in that for the process of tax being entered or the redemption period.
So we can do, we can declare excess?
So just to be clear, it's because of the first house, only the land is yours. The house is still somewhere else.
But I think you could declare it nuisance, like you said, while it actually gets the property owner, and that's how I think you're going to take it.
Okay. I think we already have, but I will double check, and if we have not, we'll do that. So, thank you.
So we can, what we need to do then is declare the residence at 310 Main Street in Utica surplus. Can I have a motion to do that?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. I would like to say that if we do this, that you carry through with what you've said as far as getting rid of the building and making it a green space?
They already have bids for that, yes.
And doing anything just to improve Utica.
Absolutely. We already have bids for all the pieces. I'm just waiting for that to become ours, so we can take care of it, so.
We'd like to get it back on the tax rolls, okay?
I agree.
All right.
Probably vote, and then decide how you want to transfer, if you want to transfer anything for free or whatever. If you declared it a surplus?
Okay.
And vote on it, and then determine whether you make a motion to transfer to the township.
Okay. So we're declaring it surplus. I have a motion to declare the 310 Main Street house in Utica surplus. Motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Okay, so now we need to determine how we're going to transfer it to you.
Give it to her.
So, well, right now, it's, we're not getting any money from it, and it's costing us labor and gasoline to go over there and mow it. So is there, does anyone have a recommendation here?
Yeah, I would give it to them.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second all liability as you gave it to us.
Thank you. We would appreciate that.
So the motion is that we gift it to you, that you take care of it, and you're, you're responsible for its liability from this day forward?
Correct. We will add that to the list of city property inhabit on our insurance roll.
Discussion by the commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Congratulations, you have a house.
Thank you, and we'll be back for the other two at the appropriate time, so. I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for doing it.
Can I get your number from you about that property?
660-4303.
Also planning District Three was actually...
Yeah, they can do it too. Yeah, they probably, they'll be the ones that...
I did see one from them earlier. Like, again, I read it with just being a Main Street improvement, so that didn't really benefit us at that time, so. One more time with your number, please.
660-4303.
Sounds good. I'll give you a call if I need to. Thank you so very much, everyone.
Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing we have, did we do this Hoffman transfer?
Yeah.
Oh, that was just her. Okay. Rob, you're next. Variance and conditional use procedures.
Oh.
Yes.
Currently, in our zoning ordinance, it's a two-thirds vote for conditional uses and variances. The law does allow, if in our zoning ordinance, we can on a conditional use change the percentage. So a conditional use does not have to be a two-thirds. It could be whatever, I mean, 51%. I mean, it can be a majority, it can be whatever the zoning ordinance states. Does that make sense? A variance has to stay at a two-thirds vote, and a two-thirds vote is 66%. Only a five, it's four, right, which is 80%, you know? Three is 60%, so we're right below the 66% in two-thirds. But the answer is, for a variance on a Board of Adjustment, it says in our zoning ordinance, but the law provides it has to be a two-thirds vote. But in 2016, the law changed and allowed zoning ordinances for conditional uses to have different percentages. So you could, if you would amend the zoning ordinance, allow conditional uses to be approved by a different percentage. You know, the percentage could be whatever, you know, a majority, three-fifths, you know? It could be whatever, whatever it wanted to be amended, but a conditional use can be changed to a different percentage, where a variance cannot.
And you're speaking of the, for the Board of Adjustment?
Board of Adjustment, mhm.
But the only way to do that is to...
Amend, amend the zoning ordinance, yep. So I'll, the only reason I'm saying is, there is the ability to make that change, and if we're making other changes, maybe that's a change we want to make, maybe it's a change we don't want to make. I don't know if that's something we want to propose, but the law does allow us to make that change.
You said that law was 2016?
2016, it was amended, yeah.
The current ordinance is four.
Two-thirds, two-thirds.
So that would mean four would have to...
Four out of five, yeah. Or if three show and two are missing, it's two, two out of three, right? So you have two people missing for whatever reason, conflict or somebody's sick.
If somebody's missing, then it's percentage of voting.
It's percentage of voting. It's who's there, so it would be two-thirds.
Two out of three, it'd be 66.
And then the numbers, it has to be 66%, but when you have five, it's technically 80%. Sorry, that make sense?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying it's something we're doing or whatever, I just...
That's an FYI, right?
Yep, FYI.
Okay, thank you. Time to go into executive session. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Going to executive session. Just a reminder, if anybody is opposed?
I oppose, yeah.
Okay. Let it be known, it was three to one. If you're going to sign up, I hope you've signed up on the board to talk after the meeting. We're picking it up as soon as we come back from executive session. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. We're in regular session.
I would make motion that we put together a committee of three or four people to review compensation.
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, so now we're going to go to the public comment period, and we've got four people signed up. During the public comment portion, commissioners are only able to listen to comments and are unable to take action due to open meeting laws. There'll be no debate or discussion from the commission during this time. If a matter needs future action, it may be placed on the upcoming agenda at the discretion of the chairman. All participants required to print their name on the sign-in sheet, address the commission from the podium, and state their name for the record. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes for public comment. So, I believe the first one is Kristi Schultz.
I served on the Yankton County Planning and Zoning Board for 12 years, and I spent at least two years working on the comprehensive plan. And on 1212 of 2017, you basically took away the county planning boards, pursuing that issue, and assigned it to a committee, you know, kind of limiting public input, because whoever's on the committee is going to control the narrative, the information, on what goes into the comprehensive plan. And I would just like to know if we have an update on what's been done on that, because last, on that 1212 of 2017 meeting, you're on chapter three, and there are, I believe, 25 chapters in that book. And also, District Three, when they were explaining to us what the comprehensive plan, what the purpose of it was, that it was basically the backbone of our ordinance, and that you base the ordinance on that comprehensive plan. So you really should not have anything written in the county zoning ordinances that are not supported by that comprehensive plan. And so I guess I would really want to know why we are making changes to the ordinance without first finishing the update of the comprehensive plan. And also, I would like to know who or what spurred the interest in changing the current two-thirds vote, needed to change a conditional use permit, to approve a conditional use permit, or to approve a variance, since that seems to be a law that has been functioning quite well as it stands, and I was wondering why you are bringing that up to a change now. And I believe that any major changes such as these should be brought to a public vote instead of written in the tiny, tiny little print that no one can read in the public notices in the paper, and not everybody gets the Yankton paper. So I think it would, if you're going to make a major change in legislation such as that, that affects virtually every other piece of legislation that comes before you, I think it would need to be brought to a public vote.
Time.
Thank you.
Robert Fring.
I live over by Valen, and I've been a resident for Yankton County for 71 years, and kind of keep track of what's going on sometimes, and things get all huffy and puffy, and everybody gets all bent out of shape for different things. I mean, my God, years ago, the commissioners actually put asphalt roads out, because when I was going to school, I went to school on gravel roads. And my God, some of these radicals, they put asphalt roads on it. And the only problem was asphalt roads require some maintenance too, just as well as gravel roads. And somewhere in the last 40 years, up until, I want to say the last year, people had seemed to forgot about upkeep and maintenance on our roads. And the road coming into Yankton that comes across a bridge, it's in pretty darn rough shape, and it needs to do. And just the other day, I went up on a Royal, up 301, I believe it is, and, you know, it is in very good condition, and I visited with some coffee, coffee klatch thing, and God, most of the people are really happy with it. The only complaint I heard in the whole works was that the line that they put on there, the temporary line, wasn't straight. That was the only complaint I heard about it. So I think it's been working pretty good, and I'm hoping some more of these get done too. So I'm hoping that gets done. And if people can get together and cooperate and look and see what actually needs to be done, which has been done in the last three, four years, they're actually getting some things done, and we need to continue this. It's very, very important that these things keep taking care of, because the roads are so and so far, and it's great to see them now, so I'm glad. Just want to say that I think people have been doing a damn good job getting things done, getting things started, going in the right direction, and I think the people would hope that they keep on. Thank you.
Dan Klemish?
Hello, everybody. I'm Dan Klemish. I'm here to ask that you guys consider moving the public comment session to sooner in the meeting. The reason I say that is because there's a lot of people here waiting to be able to address this board, maybe about any concern they have, and a lot of us sat here for 25 minutes while you guys were going through the executive session. I think the public comment section earlier in the meeting, like the city does and like so many other boards, would be something that you guys could look at doing, and humbly request that you do that. And then, second, the budget meetings that you guys have, I'd ask that they be recorded. They're probably the most important meetings that this commission has throughout the year, but they're not recorded, and if there's somebody who can't make this meeting, they're not able to see how you guys budget each and every item. So I humbly ask, in the spirit of an open government and government transparency, that you look at recording these budget meetings, so people who can't attend the meeting can view them. Thank you very much.
Did our fourth one, Louis Johnson, leave? Nope, he just moved.
Louis Johnson, Valen, South Dakota. I don't know how to say this, but I really don't want to complain about everything that's wrong. I want to thank you guys. We elected you, and as far as I'm concerned, your job isn't to run out and ask everybody if everything is okay. Your job is to run the government. If I wanted to have input, I have your phone numbers, I can call you. I don't see why everything has to get brought to a public vote all the time. This is a republic, and we have rules, we follow the rules. You don't like the rules, change the rules. The other thing I want to add is, I heard yesterday that they started setting stakes for the new pellet mill out at Napa Junction. And my understanding, that is a 10 to 12 million dollar project, and all I can say is, gee, I'm sure glad this commission had the foresight to reverse a previous decision, get government money, get private people a business to offer to pay for the road to it. And now we have the second business moving out there. And everybody, oh, jeez, it's gonna cost more than what we get in. If we don't build or develop anything in the county, I can't see where that's gonna add anything to the tax base. And I haven't really seen, I mean, I've heard, today I saw a horrible article about the stench of pigs in Sioux Falls. So far, I don't think it's hurt them. It seems like they're still doing better. Anyway. And thank you for figuring out a cheaper way to fix a road because I drove 301 and I think it's a hell of a lot better than it's been in the last fifteen years.
That concludes public comment for tonight. Time is for next meeting. Couple things for the calendar. We have mass fatality training August 20th at 6:00 PM, Fire Station 2. We have District 3 meeting August 30th in Mitchell at 3:00.
What date?
August 30th. I don't know what day that is. And we also have the convention in Pier, September 10th and 11th.
Are they coming, these tomorrow?
They're coming tomorrow.
Oh, where's that at?
Canton.
Oh, that's at the Canton Barn. It's tomorrow. Is that at? What time is that?
Well, 11:30 and then you meet at 12:00. Or they started at 12:00.
Did you figure out who took the minutes last night? Was it me? Somebody brings them. Okay, anything for the next meeting on the agenda? Okay, I don't think I have anything necessary. Take a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second. Who's gonna second?
Second.
Okay. All, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.